Good afternoon and welcome to our Tuesday, December 5th meeting. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Dodge?
Here.
Commissioner Rice?
Here.
Commissioner Laborman?
Here.
Let's please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. That's quick. So, Michael is going to give his budget presentation, and we are all excited about this. Take it away, Michael.
Thank you, Commissioners. And you're in the back, Deb, and you're in the back. Good. Okay, thank you, Commissioners. This is a 2024 budget presentation. It's amazing how time flies. This is the sixth budget for our administration. And I want to open up with two key points, Commissioners. Under your leadership, you, we have managed well. When you go back to the tornado, to COVID-19, to now, the decisions that were made around the budget, especially in 2020 to 2021, '22, to make the tough decisions around cuts, but to also protect our employees, was key to putting us in the position that we're in now. The second thing is, this will be the first budget outside of the COVID-19 incentives. So, no CARES Act, no ARPA. This will be the first budget that, which means there's certain things we're not going to be able to do, but there's going to be some great things that we are going to be able to do. So, we're going to start off with key initiatives. When we passed the sales tax in 2018, the compact that we made with the public, preschool promise, $4 million, to protect and to enrich our little ones so that they can grow. Workforce and youth works. We want to ensure that all of our young people get an opportunity to have a job, to work, and to get a work experience before they graduate. But we also have taken workforce to the community. When I say that, when you look at our centers, Business Solutions Center in Moraine, Employment Opportunity Center in West Dayton and West Town, and the new center that we plan to enhance, which is Madison Lakes and Trotwood. All of these efforts take our workforce, job retention, job attraction, recruitment, training, to the neighborhoods so that we can get more people employed. Facilities, some 30 facilities across the county will always need enhancements. Restrooms, this very room that we're in now has been enhanced. These are older facilities. We're not getting new facilities, but we are continuing to enhance the facilities that we have. The Edge Program. The Edge Program at 2.5 million is the best local community attraction and retention effort that we have. With the Edge Committee that's made up of all the different jurisdictions, we make selections on new projects, but a lot of people don't realize, we make sure that we keep our existing businesses with retention. And then Arts and Culture at 1 million. Arts and Culture is key to our community. A lot of people that come into the Miami Valley, arts and parks. We have plenty of bike trails. We have plenty of walking paths. But when you think of our arts, it's vitally important that we have things like the Schuster Center, like the Victoria Theater, and like the Dayton Art Institute. Key strategic initiatives at 1 million. This is vitally important. We're not going to have ARPA. We're not going to have 100 million anymore. But we are going to have $1 million a year for Commissioners to invest in those things in the community that you think need to be key drivers, not just for Dayton and Montgomery County, but for the entire Miami Valley, things like baseball or the Schuster Center. We continue to make those investments. So, total of 14.8 million in 2024 budget highlights. So, we'll start off with the all funds, Commissioners. Budget is made up of several different components, but the all funds is the big component. This is the total budget. And we'll start off with the all funds revenue. And I'm very pleased to announce that this will be the first year, Commissioners, that we will eclipse $1 billion. We are up 52.6 million, or 5.5%. Our key drivers here are charges for services, water and sewer, solid waste, taxes, sales tax, real estate taxes. Other financing sources include human services levy transfers, levy-funded departments. And then we have intergovernmental revenue from state and local sources. All in all, 1 billion, 4 million across key areas of the county, 15% increase in Medicaid reimbursement through Stillwater, and we know we're going to have higher investment income. Commissioner Rice used to be our treasurer, and our current treasurer is here now. Investment income will be a key driver. However, we have inflation on the other side of that, so we have to make sure that we balance that and not try to live within that. 2024 expense highlights, all funds. Again, this is the total budget. It will be 1 billion, 31 million, up 55.6 million, or 5.7%. Again, some key drivers here, personnel services, professional services, and operating transfers. 27.5 million for key environmental services projects, such as water, sewer, and solid waste. Health insurance increase. We know health insurance will continue to rise, but we've managed it very well. And then Adamus is now in spend down of certain fund balances. Those services will continue, but instead of offsetting through levy, those appropriations will be offset through our expenditures, all funds. Professional services includes maintenance contracts, equipment, maintenance and repair, operating transfers or operating transfers in and out of the general fund. Operating expenses include travel, training, supplies, subscriptions. And you also, you see some lower line items, such as budgetary adjustments for motor vehicle license, and then budgetary control. This line item puts us in unbudgeted appropriation land, where we have appropriations that are set aside for things that don't normally come up. So, now we have the general fund. The general fund is a subset of the all funds. This is our key operational fund. This is the fund that allows us to have the most flexibility within the budget. The 2024 revenue highlights of the general fund at 223 million, up 15.2 million, or 7.3%. Key drivers here will be taxes, both real estate and sales tax, intergovernmental, monies between state and federal governments that come to us, investment income, as I talked about before, and then charges for services. A big indicator here, we expect some 4 million or 26% increase in property taxes due to property tax valuation. However, on the conveyance fee side, because transactions of real estates have gone down, we expect those fees to actually go down due to higher interest rates. $5 million boost in sales tax and 6.2 million increase in investment income. Also, in these line items, Commissioners, we expect some increase in Indigene Defense, which is our public defender's office. We will budget that somewhere around 88%. Now, the general fund is self-balancing. If you notice from the all funds, they did not equal revenues and expenditures. But the general fund, by law, balances to itself. So, the expenditures and the revenues will equal at 223 million, up 15.2 or 7.3%. Key line items here are personnel services at 133 million, operating transfers at 34.9, and professional services at 33.1. Personnel services increased by 8.4 million, or 6.7%. We expect rising healthcare costs, and we also are budgeting for next year's presidential election. So, when we get away from the financial statements, what are the key program drivers that drive the budget? Kind of getting out of the financial statement format and getting more into, what does this really mean when you turn it into sources and uses? This next slide goes over the 2024 expense by program overview. Takes the same 1 billion, 31 million, and slices it up so you can see how the money is spent by program. 44.34 is spent, or 43% in social services. Judicial and law enforcement at 227 million, or 22%. General government at 168 million, or 16%. Environmental services at 167, or 16%. And then we go to community and development at 17 million, and debt service at 168. Now, we're going to go through each of these real quick so you can see what makes up the different programs. Social services is huge. And I'm going to talk a little bit about this because we have a lot compacted into almost a half a billion dollars, 43% of our budget. Recognizing in our population, starting with JFS. JFS makes up family assistance, child support, and it also makes up childcare, TANF, Medicaid, food insecurity, then you have child welfare. Now, in these numbers, you have 170,000 of our people that are on Medicaid within our county. You have 75,000 that are impacted by snap and food insecurity. We have an average 700 of our young people that are in care with children's services at any given day. Roughly 20 to 30% of our 530,000 people in our population are in some level of poverty. However, contrary to all of what you see in the media, the vast majority of people are working poor. They need help to move to the next level. So, our social services provides the safety net for our county and for our citizens. Our Human Services Levy Department headed up by Jessica is basically our levy. It's a 137 million a year powerhouse. It's also our homeless solutions, and it is also our arts. Now, the key to the levy is the levy becomes the supporting mechanism for all of the other departments that you see here. It becomes the driver to bring in more state and federal money, whether it's DDS, or whether it's Stillwater, or in the case of Adamus, or in the case of public health. It is huge. So, all of these support mechanisms feed off the levy, and we have one of two counties that have a combined Human Services Levy. DDS, the work that is going on in developmental disabilities is second to none in our county. And Commissioners, I commend you for adding an additional $17 million in ARPA to help offset some of the things that are going on with the state right now. But we need to continue to advocate for more funding. I also commend you on the $8 million that offset children's services so that we can help our children in foster care and adoption. Stillwater. Stillwater Center, we have the best intermediate care facility in the state of Ohio, headed up by Dr. Michelle Pierce Mobley, who's here today. Michelle, you want to stand, wave? She does a fantastic job. 98-bed facility. I think we've got about 96 to 97 people right now, Michelle. And it is a phenomenal facility for our most acute citizens. We also have expanded into oxygen and ventilator, which is huge. And ARPA Diam in this area has gone up. Adamus. Adamus continues to be the spear for our behavioral health, both on the drug and alchyl side and on the mental health side. Business services, we have the TANF portion in social services for our workforce division. And then we have facilities and our vet services. The services that our vets get when they come in and they need housing, or they need just a leg up, some transportation. Our Vet Services does a great job of helping our vets out. Next, Commissioners, is judicial and law enforcement at 227 million, or 22% of our budget. This is led by our sheriff and law enforcement, both our jail complex, our road patrol to our townships, and the work that our sheriff does with corrections officers. Juvenile Court, JFS, which is our, part of our JFS that's in the judicial side, common police division, the prosecutor, the clerk of courts, and the coroner. Now, inside the JFS side is our child support unit. And this is huge as it relates to establishing fraternity and also collections. Governance and Debt. Administrative Services, this is our facilities, our fleet, our parking garage, our risk and safety, the county auditor. We talked about conveyance fees, but we also talk about property evaluations. Our business services. Again, our workforce is throughout all of these areas, but you also have our economic development, too. Our treasurer, who's here today, John McManus. Our data processing, which falls under our auditor, the Board of Elections, and also our county recorder, who's here today. Environment and Public Works. Now, we'll start off with environmental services, Commissioners, because at 167 million overall, environmental services is 145 million of it, or 87%. Now, this is water, sewer, and solid waste. And it is huge because the compact that we made, again, with the public, Commissioners, we will invest over a billion dollars in our infrastructure over the next coming years, and that is happening every single year. When you look at the infrastructure, there is no other county in the state that has the sheer volume of infrastructure that we do. Some 28 million gallons of day of water provided to over a customer base of over 250,000 people in the county. 1,400 miles of water line, 1,200 miles of sewer line, 680,000 tons of trash is moved out of our solid waste transfer station every single year. Commissioners, the infrastructure involved in this is amazing. And as you can see here, we've got two big projects. The first, and the drone flyover, is our SMART project. This is an almost $70 million project between Moraine and West Carrollton to move pretreatment into the plant, into West Carrollton. And then, I can't talk enough about the work that our county engineer does. Paul Gruner, we have more bridges than anybody else in the state of Ohio. And Paul has decided that he's going to make sure every one of them are safe, and he's going to repair or replace every single bridge. So, we are blessed, Paul, that that we've got you leading the way. Paul also has a certain amount of snowplows, road patrol, out making sure our roads are safe. So, Paul, you're doing a great job. This is the Frederick Pike Bridge, so thank you. Then we've got soil and water, and then we've got our facilities team again. Finally, Commissioners, Community and Economic Development. The work that Tawana and her team does in this area at 17.4 million, 6.5 of it, or 37%, is in economic development, is second to none. Tawana works on the community side and on the economic development side. The community side is the money to jurisdictions through CDBG and through our grants to help development. A lot of people don't realize, Commissioners, that you are on the forefront of housing through the home program and helping developers move to low-end, moderate-income housing. You're also on the forefront, and we are number one in distribution of rental assistance during this period of COVID-19. Our Edge Program and our CDBG Program work hand-in-hand. The Edge Program on attraction and retention and the CDBG Program on investments within the community. Office and Budget and Management, our hotel motel taxes, huge infrastructure that allows us to reinvest in our tourism, and then again, our facilities. Throughout the entire presentation, Commissioner, you probably see non-departmental. Those are dollars that are allocated to Office and Budget Management for things that the department might need that come up throughout the year. I'd be remiss, Commissioners, if I didn't talk about the Human Services Levy for a minute. As I talked about earlier, the Human Services Levy touches directly or indirectly every single person in our county, in every single area. The Human Services Levy at 137 million is leveraged against 211 million of state and federal money to become a third of a billion dollars that we utilize in human services. There's no other levy in the state of Ohio that is better managed, and we have the community input of all through the Human Services Levy Council. With that, Commissioners, I will close in noting this. This budget is the best low debt, and we have the highest credit rating of any other government in this area, both in Moody's and Standards and Poor's. Matter of fact, next year, we will make the last GOO obligation payment on the Juvenile Justice Center, and our county will be in a unique position of not having any more GOO obligation debt. We have a balanced budget, both on the general fund side and on our all-fund side. No increase in water rates or sewer rates. This is huge because we're running on the same rate structure that we approved five years ago. The sales tax initiatives are maintained. Key infrastructure across the entire county is invested in, and key strategic use of ARPA, without making it part of our operational budget, is adhered to. Somehow, there's a guy that snuck into my presentation. I've never seen him before in my life. No, this picture, Commissioners, I think is indicative of the work that everyone, every elected official, every manager, every director in this county, the fact that the Government Finance Officers Association out of Chicago has given us, as the only county in the nation, 41 straight years of budget award. With that, Commissioners, I'd like to open it up for any questions.
No, I was just going to say real quick, thank you, thank the staff at OMB, and also have to give a shout out to all the elected officials who came together to work with you on their budget for next year. So, you know, no question about it. We've got our work cut out for us, but I feel very comfortable with the budget, so thank you.
And I'll just add, you know, we know that as counties, our budget has to balance. But the work that went into this, thank you. John, your team, all of our department heads, all of our assistant county administrators, administrator, elected officials. This is a big, big deal, you know? And that's something in Ohio that county commissioners are tasked with, making sure that they're done right, budgets are done right. But because of all of you, you make us look good. And we know it. I mean, we start this in what, August?
Yeah.
And
It probably starts in July or August is when you see it.
Yeah. And so, we get to this point, and I think it's worth noting, as you said, I mean, there's not going to be any more of those federal dollars. And we have used those dollars in transformational projects. And thank you. And we haven't seen everything happen quite yet. We've committed the dollars. But, you know, the next few years are going to be a challenge without those extra federal dollars. But, Michael, thank you. We're really proud of this work and of the work that we do every single day. And I think this presentation really shows that, how we touch every single life in this county and region as well, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Well, they haven't left me much to say.
Nope.
But, you know, when I am out and about so often, our citizens don't really understand what the county does. And I often say it's because we do it incredibly well, so you're not asking, you know, what went wrong. Or luckily, in a lot of cases, as you know, 43% of our budget goes to human services. And hopefully, you don't need those services, that you're able to, you know, have a thriving life without some of those services. But this is a testament to the incredible work that we as a county do. Because where you spend your money is where your priorities are. And I think we do a wonderful job of balancing it out. You know, having been the county treasurer, you know, I know all about fiscal responsibility, and we are incredible, and you've all heard me say this before, we're incredible stewards of our citizens' tax dollars and the monies that come to us from the state and federal. We are incredible about making sure it goes to good things and they are well-spent. It makes me very proud. I would stack this up against any private entity I've ever worked for. And maybe even a little bit more because we find ways to do so much good with resources that seem limited at times. This is a group effort, and we always put our community first. And this is a huge display of how we prioritize our community in all the ways that matter because we believe that these investments are the way you build a better future. We can't solve all the problems that confront us, but by gosh, we do a great job of really meeting those challenges, you know, front-on and giving our citizens a great value for the faith they've given us to serve them. So, thank you to every person in the county who played a role in this, and I know it's every person. And for our incredible, John, your team, I know that you work with everyone. I'm repeating what they've said, but we truly appreciate everyone's role in this. Together, we are setting a dynamic for the coming year that I think really addresses the challenges we face and the responsibility that we take to do the very, very best for our citizens because they deserve no less. Very proud of our county, very proud of our community. This makes me excited for 2024.
Thank you, Commissioners. Commissioners, I would like to give thanks to the department heads and directors across the county. I'd also like to thank the Office of Budget Management. Please stand up. Office of OMB, please stand up. Just give them a round of applause. John Parks has done a fantastic job leading OMB. I'd also like to thank the communications team. Deb, where you at? Where's your team at? Okay. Communications team put together the graphics and the presentation. And Commissioners, I'd like to thank you. Again, we went through some tough budgetary times, and you led, and you put us in a position to benefit now, so thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Gentlemen, I just want to point out that you are in that picture.
Yeah, we saw.
They always try to stay out of the picture, but you can see the tops of their heads.
And Emily, too, a little bit. All right. Well, again, thank you, team, everyone involved. It's really been a great effort, and we're looking forward to seeing the next year.
So, with that, our county engineer.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Administrator, ladies and gentlemen, OMB staff. We do really appreciate working together with all of you on the budget and all the things that we go through the year. So, we have several items for you today. The first is Resolution 23-1555 to authorize a purchase from GEO Buyers Holding LLC for six 2024 Ford trucks in the amount not to exceed $268,430. 1556 is with Washington, is an agreement with Washington Township for participation in the 2024 Crack Seal Program. And 1557 is an agreement with Perry Township for participation in the 2024 asphalt concrete resurfacing program.
Move to approve.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
County Sheriff.
Thank you, Commissioners. Under the County Sheriff, we have Resolution 1558, accept a grant from the Ohio Department of Public Safety, Project Safe Neighborhoods, in the amount of $65,794.98.
I move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Common Police Court.
Thank you, Commissioners. Under the Common Police Court, we have Resolution 1559, submit a grant application to the Supreme Court of Ohio for an adult drug and veteran treatment court's special funding opportunity to fund new or updated case management systems in the amount of $100,000.
Move to approve.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And Michael.
Under the County Administrator, we have, under the clerk of the commission, approve the minutes of the meeting on November 28, 2023. Resolution 1560, approval of bills, and Resolution 1561, approval of personnel actions. Both those lists are available in the clerk's office.
I move to approve.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Administrative Services, Tyler.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. We have several resolutions for you today, beginning with Resolution 1562. This authorizes an addendum to the billing terms and conditions of the Key to Purchase Agreement with KeyBank for procurement card services for various county departments. This should be the last document that needs your signature, and then we'll be able to move forward with the P-card program. The following resolutions approve Justice Web Service Agreements, beginning with 1563. For the Board of County Commissioners of Butler County, on behalf of the Butler County Prosecutor's Office, in an amount not to exceed $50,000 over the life of the agreement. 1564 is with the Butler County Sheriff's Office. 1565 is with the City of Riverside Police Department. 1566 is with the Green County Department of Job and Family Services, Children's Services Division, in an amount not to exceed $1,500 annually. Resolution 1567 is with the Ohio Auditor of State, in an amount not to exceed $500 through June 30 of 2024. Resolution 1568 is with the United States Marshal Service through December 31 of 2024. 1569 is for the United States probation, Dayton, through December 31 of 2024. 1570 is with the University of Dayton Public Safety. 1571 is with the Van Delya Police Division, and last is 1572 with various criminal justice and governmental entities.
Wow. It's really increased, hasn't it, over the years?
It really has, but I think we're in a position now where we've got a good, solid system, and we're improving our security apparatus around that. And we're looking forward to the future of Justice Web.
Good.
Thank you.
Okay. Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Environmental Services, Vijay.
Yeah, Commissioners, I have six resolutions for your approval. The Resolution Number 1573 is to designate funds from the Regent Water Main Replacement Project to be used for The resolution number fifteen seventy-three is to designate funds from the Regent Water Main Replacement Project to be used for payments for individual service fee locations at an estimated amount not to exceed one-hundred-and-thirty-nine thousand, eight-hundred-and-seventy dollars and eighty cents. Resolution fifteen seventy-four is accept the performance bond for H B S Down Homes Development in the amount of five-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand, seven-fourteen. The next two resolutions were demanding the agreements. Fifteen seventy-five is Viking Painting LLC for the Walnut Grove Tank Rehab Project by reducing forty-five thousand, seven-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars and twenty-one cents from the original amount for a revised total of one-million, five-hundred-and-fifty-one thousand, seven-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars and seventy-nine cents, and extending the term through April first, twenty-twenty-four. The next one, fifteen seventy-six, Choice One Engineering for Preparation of Detailed Construction Plans and Specs for the Cricket Woods Lift Station Enforcement Replacement Project by adding fifteen hundred to the original amount for a revised total of seventy-four thousand, two-hundred, and extending the term through March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five. The next two resolutions for the approval of plans, specs, and estimated costs, and to receive bids. Fifteen seventy-seven is erosion, erosion control site, fifteen Tom, Tomahawk Trail Project in the amount of five-hundred-and-fifty thousand. Fifteen seventy-eight is South Metro Tank Rehab Project in the amount of two-million, seven-hundred-and-twenty thousand.
I move to approve.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
O M B, John Parks.
Thank you so much, uh, I have only one.
It's a big one, it's a big one.
Approval.
Very important to me.
Uh, Resolution fifteen seventy-nine to approve the twenty-two-four permanent appropriation of one billion, thirty-one million, eighty-seven thousand and seventy-two dollars for all county offices and agencies appropriated on a calendar year basis.
I don't know, I think I'm gonna think about this first. I move to approve.
Thank you so much.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Again, John, thank you.
You're welcome.
Human Services, Jessica.
Good afternoon, I get to follow that.
I know, right?
So we have three, three resolutions, um, Resolution fifteen eighty, authorizing requests for proposals for services for older adults, sixty years in older, funded through the Ohio Healthy Aging Grant. And then two resolutions authorizing memorandums of understandings through December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five. Resolution fifteen eighty-one with Clark State College for Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, Employment and Training Information Sharing. And Resolution fifteen eighty-two with Catholic Social Services of the Miami Valley for Administration of the Refugee Social Services Program.
I move for approval, but I do want to mention that fifteen eighty, um, thank you, Jessica, we had a great, Judy and I, um, met with, well, she's part of F C F C, and we spent two hours on Friday going over, uh, this healthy aging grants and all the different, you had a wonderful, several panels of local experts coming in, talking about, um, all the opportunities and the trends that we see. So, this is so exciting, this is that one-time funding of over one-point-seven million dollars that will be available. This is available across the state for forty million, and our portion is one-point-seven million, what a difference this can make on promising programs. It, it won't be repeatable necessarily, but what a boost it can give to the things that we're trying to do. So, very, very excited to, um, move for approval for this request for proposals.
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And we do have to thank the state, uh, for this, we don't often do that, thank the state, but, um, well, they're awfully stingy with our money, you know? But, um, and, and you can quote me on that, but, um, this was big for the whole state, but especially for us, and, and so it's, it's really great. Okay, um, under county commissioners portion, we have twenty-three fifteen eighty-three, and that is to reappoint Richard Holmes, Michael Cromarty, and Sheila Crane to the Montgomery County Planning Commission for three-year terms ending December thirty-first of twenty-twenty-six.
Move to approve.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and, and we do have to thank our, uh, planning commission members, it's kind of a thankless job, um, but they're, and these three especially, always there, we can count on them, they do, uh, great work with us, so, thank you. Okay, we do have one citizen signed up to speak, and that would be Mr. Feaster, come on up.
Willie Feaster.
That was nice.
Yeah, I'm, I heard you talk about, yesterday, uh, uh, I was on my phone, and I came, Ms., Mayor Trump with Ms. McDonald had posted something, it was gonna be her last city commission meeting, so she started off like, I'mma list all my accomplishments. And right there, that kinda irked me, you know? So I, 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 I shot back at her, I said, your number one compliment should be God, he should be first. All that other stuff means nothing to me, uh, whoever. I said, without him, you could not accomplish none of that. And to me, it's like boasting, I could be wrong. You know, Ms. Limerman, you post stuff all the time, but I never take it as boasting. When you post it, it's like humbleness, you talk about you, Ms. Dodge, you talk about Ms. Rod, Ms. Rice, but I never respond to you like that. Well, when I seen that, it's like boasting, what can we do without God, we nothing, we are nothing, we just, like a breath of air. We can't even get up in the morning, every day somebody dying. But to get on there and say, the first thing I'mma do is post about all my accomplishments, who cares about your accomplishments, for real, in life? Who really care, look at all the good things y'all have done, but who really care, God is number one. He gives the glory and the praise. He made it possible for you to accomplish all that, your looks, your education, your money, who you know, who you don't, that means nothing. Without God, he come first, then your accomplishments come second, third, fourth, fifth, you can talk about all the plagues, the, all that can come next. But you must give God his glory, 'cause that's what he does it for, that's why he blesses you, that's, look at you. Like I said, every time you post something, I respond, because I take it humble, I never think you boasting. Out there, oh, Willie, I'mma, you never come to me, you know, when you post up about Ms. Her and Ms. Dodge. It's always, it's humbleness, and that's why I respond the way, well, when it's somebody coming like, what she did like that, this is my last meeting, I'm gonna list all of my accomplishments. Black woman, you better not come over here with that, you better not come over to the county commissioner, I'mma be your number one, I'mma stand up here, I'mma let you have it. You better stay out there in my, Trumpwood, I don't play that. God don't do, bless us to boast, he blessed us to praise him, then everything else come, you know, but that just irked me last night, when I, I seen that, I, I just felt a certain kind of way, man, he gave you eighteen years, look how long you've been on here.
Nineteen.
But how many times have you boasted, look at Ms. Josh, Ms. Rice, y'all don't boast, and I love that. That's why I always respond the way I do, when you put stuff on there and you always respond back, 'cause I take it as humbleness. You know without God, Ms. Limerman, what could we do?
Thank you, Mr. Feaster.
Yeah, thank you, Willie.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We always know we're gonna get some preaching from Willie, thank you, Willie, thanks. County Administrator.
Thank you, commissioners, um, we are excited to announce the details for the twenty-two-four Fatherhood Summit. We do the summit every year, and then, of course, we do the, the other part of fatherhood around Father's Day, so the summit is in January. It's taking place on Thursday, January twenty-fifth, from eight-thirty A M to three P M at Sinclair College. This event brings together local agencies, organization, and community partners with a shared goal of supporting our fathers in overcoming barriers and strengthening their relationships with their children. Uh, this year's theme is creating opportunity, so, creating opportunity. Join us as we foster collaboration and provide valuable resources to empower the dads in our community. Uh, we also want to make sure you secure your spot by registering online, we have a link at our website, mcohio.org. Uh, just search under the latest county news section. And if you have any questions or need any information, please contact our Fatherhood Director, our Director of Strategic Initiatives is here, Haley. Uh, but please contact our Fatherhood Director, Michael Newsom, at nine-three-seven-two-two-five-four-seven-five-seven. Again, Michael Newsom, at nine-three-seven-two-two-five, uh, four-seven-five-seven. You know, commissioners, the other side of this is child support, uh, and, and we're blessed, I mentioned child support in the budget. We also have our J F S Director here, Michelle Niedemeyer, and, uh, child support is a piece of collections, but it's also a part of fatherhood and paternity. Uh, and then Mike also weaves this in, uh, to reentry also. So all of these pieces to our puzzle work together, and we work together as a team. So thank you for your support, commissioners, in supporting the Fatherhood Summit.
Thanks, Michael, for putting that out, um, Haley, please pass on to Michael, how appreciative we are of, of the work he does, that one person does, it's, it's kind of phenomenal, actually. But to do several of these big events, but he really connects with the community. You know, we saw him cook out, we see him, you know, really trying to make those connections for fathers that may not have that relationship with their children. And again, a special thanks for the work that he ties in with our Office of Reentry, you know, those men and women coming through there, I know it's fatherhood, but the women too. He helps make those connections, gets the connections with child support, 'cause we don't want anyone to be, um, well, we don't want them to get too far behind, and, and we don't want them to have issues with, with the parent, the other parent, and so, Michael, I, I'm just so proud of this fatherhood initiative that we're one of the few counties in Ohio that has this, um, I don't know how many others there are, quite honestly. I know that there's a state fatherhood initiative, um, but this has been great, and every time we go to one of those events, and oftentimes Judge Rice comes and speaks, and, and, you know, it's just, it's wonderful that we can do this, so again, Thursday, the twenty-fifth, and that is the, um, that's the summit. And as Michael mentioned, then we do the big banquet around Father's Day weekend, then the next day we have a big picnic event, and this last year, there were, it wasn't Juneteenth last year, hopefully it will be again this, well, it wouldn't be on, well, anyway, it'll be close to Juneteenth. But yeah, we, we enjoyed it, there were bands playing, and really great event at the Love It. So, this is another thing that's pretty exciting, um, we've been able to, for the last, well, since we opened office, um, our Employment Opportunity Center at West Town, two years ago, we've been having this I T, um, initiative. And we just graduated our fifth cohort from that, and that's pretty amazing, actually. So, we just wanted to take a moment and say congratulations to those graduates, this partnership has been so important, um, between our team and Sinclair. We couldn't have done it without Sinclair, um, they come in and they teach, and, and I've met the teachers, and they, you know, they're thankful that we're out doing this, and the fact that we're doing it at West Town is really important, because, you know, for some people, it may be too daunting even to come down here, you know, to, to West Third, to our third street here, across from our building to Sinclair. But they, the people in the area, they can go to West Town, and they can continue their education at Sinclair after they're done with our cohorts. So, the great news about this for us is a couple of these, uh, graduates are now apprentices in our county I T, um, department. So, Tyler, thank you, Chris, thank you, this, we are, we all work together on this, and, um, we do the cohorts, um, pretty much continuously. But so if people are interested in joining the next cohort, call our Employment Opportunity Center, and Michael, there, we'll talk to you, it's nine-three-seven-four-nine-six-seven-zero-zero-two.
Thank you, Commissioner, I'd also like to thank our Director of I T, Chana Youngblood.
Is she here?
She's, she's not here, but, uh, you know, her and Chris worked very hard to get, to get this program launched, and, and Eric, uh, I know you're there, you, you need some I T people in juvenile court. So let us know if, if we can, they're already trained, uh, so.
Oh, good.
Thank you, thank you, Eric.
Great.
Good, okay. Well, the commissioners, we had a kind of a busy weekend, but Sunday, we were at the Haynes Center because our friends from the Ohio Coalition of Clubs paid us another visit, this time they again donated about ten thousand dollars worth of toys and bikes for children in foster care. They came roaring in on their bikes and motorcycles and trucks and everything, and, and brought, that was really something for a couple hours. And, you know, it really means a lot to us, and especially to our children in care, to know that their community cares about them and is thinking about them during the holiday season. So, you know, these big-hearted bikers, as we like to call them, have been doing this for about six years now, six years. They, we do an Easter, Easter egg hunt in the spring, and then, uh, they bring backpacks loaded with supplies for back-to-school time. So, you know, they're just great, it's just a great organization, so again, thank you so much to Ohio State Coalition of Clubs. And I have to give a shout out to Walmart, because they worked with this group to bring in the toys and the bikes, so, it, it was just, it was very meaningful.
It, it really is, I mean, every time you see this, you hear the rumble of the Harleys coming down Main Street, right, they're here, they're here. And, and sure enough, these guys roll up, and they are dressed in their leathers, and a couple of them said, do we scare, I'm like, no, you don't scare us, you guys are big-hearted, you know?
That's right.
Wonderful people, and, um, it, it truly brought a tear to my eye, when you see these brand-new bikes, all these toys, and they're not, they're not cheap toys either.
Nope.
And the nice thing is, is that Michelle and her team, um, they know what the kids want. And so it's not like, you know, they're gonna get a Monopoly game for, you know, a six-year-old that wouldn't probably want to play Monopoly, but they're great gifts. We didn't get a chance this year to help sort, but last year we helped sort, it's really incredible. So, again, to those, those men and women, and there were some women on their bikes.
Yeah.
Um, and it's clubs, the club, the Ohio Coalition of Clubs is all kinds of the biker clubs, it's not, you know, they're not in one club. And they're not just from Montgomery County either, they're from the region, and so that's nice too, but we've gotten to know some of the leadership, and they're, they're just wonderful, and they love doing it. You know, a couple of them had tears in their eyes, and it, it's really meaningful, so we have to say thank you to them. As Michael mentioned in his presentation, you know, we have seven hundred, uh, children that are in foster care in our custody, and we like to call them our kids. And it just, when they do this, and then you're gonna hear from Carolyn about another big-hearted group, and we, we are just so thrilled, so, um, thank you.
Absolutely, and as Debbie mentioned, there, there is another group, uh, and we're not done, there's more coming the rest of the month, so, you know, that's another great thing about this community, is that there are so many big-hearted groups who, um, think about different, um, services that we provide, different audiences, so another group that has long supported our foster children is the Omega Baptist Church's Social Justice Ministry. And I believe this is their third year, uh, they have been donating about fifty suitcases. Uh, they're all exactly the same, because they don't want any child to think one is better than the other, uh, and so they're all exactly the same, they are filled with all kinds of items, because so often, and this is really sad but true, that a child gets, uh, whisked out of a home on a very hurried basis, so they don't really have time to collect a lot of things, or they don't have anything to put it in, might be a trash bag or something like this. So, this is something that they can have, that is, uh, new, filled with great things that they can use, personal care items, and they can keep. And it just shows them that they matter and that they deserve more, and so, huge cha, uh, thank you to Omega, they're actually talking about maybe doing it more than once a year. So, you know, uh, it, it catches on, and as you said, we have about seven hundred children in our care at any one time. And so, uh, we just want to thank Omega, but also want to reach out to any of you who are touched by the plight of our foster children, if you'd like to get involved. We very, very much need to find more homes for our children, because, uh, they each deserve a great place to live with people who care about them while their situation is being sorted out. Um, so if you- So, if you are interested, our next informational meeting is actually coming up. We have them regularly. The next one is this Monday, December 11, from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. at the Haynes Children's Center, which is on Main Street. For more information, you can go to our website, mcohio.org, or you can call 937-224-KIDS-KIDS. 937-224-kids. So, we're going to have more to talk about the rest of the month. The Haynes is all set up, and there's more groups that care deeply about our kids. And as we tell each of them, they don't just write checks. They show up, and we send a message to those children that they matter because they, they most definitely do matter and deserve a lot of joy in their lives.
Thank you. Okay. Our next meeting, next Tuesday, right here on December the 12th.
It's going too fast. You don't have to make an appointment, but we typically have you fill out something. But you come on up and then fill out the form, please, and give us your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Regular guy down here. I live in Perry Township, and I have a home there, and I have a rental property in Jefferson Township. Seems like I've seen all this money going to the better districts around here. You say, you drive around. I don't know how you drive around, blinders on in Jefferson Township. Them people, the trustees out there, never do anything. They say they have no money. I seen you're going to make a parking lot for this new Joby or a driveway, a million dollars. A million dollars would help Jefferson Township, like all get out. Steve Wolf was their last administrator. He didn't do much, but he did go around. There's 150 abandoned houses and lots that are full of trash. How would you guys like to live next to something like that? And them kids out there have to live in that field, and, and you call them to do something, they say they got no money. The street they're on, their offices, full of potholes and three abandoned houses there. One of them's completely burnt out next to the apartment complex there, and they won't do nothing about it. Been there for years. It's 10 years in arrears on taxes, but they won't do anything about getting it demolished. Second thing is, I'm a veteran. I go to VA Center, Lisk and Drive. It's right between Dayton and Jefferson Township. They got one sidewalk. Nobody takes care of it. It's overgrown with brush, debris. A guy in a wheelchair could not get down that street. And nobody cares. Jefferson Township says, well, it's Dayton. Dayton says it's Jefferson Township. Same old kick-around. They've been doing this for years out there. Nothing ever gets done. You guys today ought to go out there and drive down each street and see if what I'm telling you isn't right. I know it's nice to live in the nice areas and that kind of stuff. I live in Perry Township nice. I seen where you're going to chip and seal their roads. There's not a good road in Drexel, but there's, Perry Township is fine. So, I don't know why you're spending money out there. Need to devote some time down there, get some businesses to roll in there. Better quality of people, schools, they're all terrible out there, I'm telling you. And I don't understand how you guys can keep doing that. It makes everybody's property out there. The value goes down. You guys are losing tax money by not bringing up the value of the whole area. So, anyway, that's all I got to say for today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sir, I'd add you some clarifications here. We have no jurisdiction over the township. However, we do invest heavily in certain areas of Jefferson Township.
Didn't you guys just give them $75,000 out there for, and you know what they're going to use it for?
We gave them.
A walkway.
We give them.
In a park that I don't even know where the park is at.
We give them multiple grants to do multiple things with, but that being.
You give New Levin and 50,000, they're going to tear down some houses up there.
What I'd like you to do, sir, if you could, Chris Williams is here on the end of this chair. He's got his hand up right here in front of you. Chris Williams?
Oh, right there.
If you could, I'd like to get some of your issues over to Chris, and then we can follow up on some of your complaints.
Absolutely, and thanks for bringing it to our attention.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
I think that's it.
Okay. All right. I move to adjourn.
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Have a great week.
Have a fantastic week.